Oh, next meeting, I will be on vacation. I know.
Okay, let me see.
But.
If the vice chair would like to do that meeting.
Um. I can still have all day.
No.
I can still prepare and does not all that fun stuff. I just won't be able to be here for the actual meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, I we have ever done it solo, so. Just after.
You said vacation, can you explain what that is?
Yeah.
It's a foreign concept to me, apparently. I'm supposed to use the time I'm allotted.
When everybody else doesn't work and you do.
Yeah.
Germany should be here in a few minutes or here here on.
On Zoom, okay, so let's start and then uh.
Thank you.
If you guys want, you can, uh, we can um swap around so that you don't wait and you can stay if you want, it's public meeting.
Don't take it long, we might be in trouble.
Thank you.
Point person.
Yeah, all stupid pages.
Yeah.
I see.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So this is the February meeting of the Bristol Planning Commission. Um, it is seven oh two and I'll call the meeting to order. We have a forum. Uh, the first item on the agenda is to review additions, removals or adjustments of any items. Uh, we were just talking about swapping new business and continuing business. Uh, so that the Conservation Commission can give their presentation and not have to hang around. Uh, for our deliberations on the on discussion IDV chargers, so. Um, we'll wait a few minutes for Carolyn to join us on Zoom. Um, and then we'll let them uh take. And present if that is okay with everybody. Is there any objections to that? Okay, so we'll do that. Um. I don't know. We should. At this point, we're kind of, we will be kind of waiting. Or if we can pop down to. Want to, again, I don't know if we, oh, we've got public comment here. So um, we have any public comment? Nope. Um, so as loosely as we're operating today, I would suggest we s- jump down and look at the minutes. While we're waiting for Carolyn. If we can do that, anybody have objections to that?
Okay, let's hear that.
Oh, Carolyn, so let's set that aside. Um, and we will um. Hear what the commission says and AC, you had some preamble with them, so I don't know if you wanna do any introductions or. Anything like that, or we just wanna hand it over to Carolyn and her her group.
I might just hand it over to Carolyn and. The rest of the Conservation Commission. Our communications have mostly been scheduling.
Okay. Carolyn.
Hello, hi, sorry I couldn't be there in person, I um had a childcare thing with the school board um meeting tonight. Um, hi, I'm so glad to finally to see all you, even though it's virtual. Um, I think Max, I hope he's there, I know we switched around the the timing here, wanted to give a presentation to start us off. We kind of envisioned this would be a nice opportunity. Um, Max is one of our students and now alumni from Middlebury College, we thought he could give a little presentation for where we're at right now at the project. Then we could have, you all could ask us questions and then we can ask you questions about how we can continue this conversation over the next coming years. So I just wanted to let Max sort of start that off and uh we'll see where we're at after his presentation.
Just come right up and step here if you want.
Cause I did my own slideshow.
Yeah, if you could just send it to the zoning email. Share it to zoning email, cover best works. Is it a Google?
Uh, it can be Google or PowerPoint, whatever.
PowerPoint be best, Google gets into the whole. Which town account am I signed to at the current moment in time?
What's the email?
Zoning at Bristol VT dot org.
Well, while Max is doing that, um, a couple, a couple notes the shared, so. Basically, this this project um is i- is is far from comprehensive at this point. So what we've largely done kind of on a broad scale is endeavor to update what was a fairly simple wildlife core in that job at time Bristol. Obviously, um, there's sort of macro and micro levels to that, like, you know, wildlife corridors exist within subdivisions within mountain ranges on and all scales in between. Um, what we've got here is sort of a. Macro level take on it, um, we've selected a few different spots, um, that was kind of my role in the project as somebody that spends a lot of time in the woods and on some fishes. That were woods outside of Bristol quite a lot. Um, just doing like a fieldwork portion with the uh with the Middlebury students, um, so we selected a few few locations that we felt were. A very interesting corridors that that followed a lot of traffic through them. But also were um be like available for us to do camera trapping in, which is not all properties, you have to have Randall and permission and so on, obviously. And then also we're like representative of other types of habitat features that we could sort of then use to extrapolate through um through other landscapes. So what we've got here is like a sort of tip of the iceberg kind of thing and we're very interested in figuring out where to take this next. Um, it's kind of a living project, you know, it's um something that we can, you know, there's no end to it really. But one of the things that we thought would be really interesting was talking to you guys, one potential group that might have interest in this data. And to see kind of where you thought we could, you know, if there's there's ways that this could be useful to you and how we might tailor it towards your your needs. Um, you're not the only audience for it, uh, we also, uh, part of this project was providing. pamphlets with information to landowners on how they can facilitate wildlife being, you know, uh, facilitate not disrupting. Traffic through their properties um can be fun for a lot of landowners, whether they hunt or observe or whatever. Um, so there's there's a variety of audiences, but you guys were one and it would be a, it'd be really interesting to us to sort of like hear what what you think. Would be useful for, you know, directions that we could take this that might be productive for is a. Just one of, I'm sure, many data points that you might consider in your own, your own.
Awesome, we're waiting for that then, so my name is Carolyn Dash, I don't know how much you talked to me before I was able to jump on. I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission in Bristol. And I'm I'm also an ecologist. I'm a professor of biology at Middlebury College and so what's been really great about this project is we've been able to work with students and with faculty members at Middlebury College. So that we've had, I think, seven student projects now over the last three years where the students have worked with me and with the Conservation Commission and Alex and other. Um, community partners as well as faculty partners. So we could really work together and get those Middlebury students to help us get meaningful work done as part of their independent study projects, which has been a really. Really positive collaboration that we've had with them, so we've gotten a lot of work done and they've gotten a lot of experience as well. Max is one of those students, he's gonna talk about one of our biggest projects.
Yeah, alright, um. Hi, everybody, my name is Max Elser, I just graduated from Middlebury College like less than a month ago now. Um, but I spent last spring and the past year working with the Bristol Conservation Commission. Um, as well as some other students at the college to update some of the research about Bristol's natural resources that was already existing. Um, and so I just wanted to give an update to you guys about that and try to foster some discussion about um. What steps we can take together, about what to do with that information and so on. Um, and so just quickly, uh. The Bristol Conservation Commission's mission um is primarily to conserve Bristol's natural and cultural heritage for present and future generations. Um, and then also to raise public awareness for those resources and provide opportunities for community engagement. Um, and involvement with conservation within the Bristol community. Um, and so with that in mind, um, we start here, a scene I am sure that you are all familiar with. Um, I personally love this photo, I think it really captures uh what I understand to be Bristol and its community. Um, kind of this beautiful town here with some amazing natural scenery and so. That entire picture is what the Bristol Conservation Commission is working to build community around, to protect. Um, to perpetuate for the future. Um, and so with that in mind, the research that um Carolyn and Alex have talked about. Uh, that was previously done that we were working with, um, are these two maps here? Um, as well as a couple of other things that are not pictured. Um, and these are great, uh, this was amazing work, but. This work was also done, as you may see, in two thousand and two. Uh, which is quite a few years ago now, um, there's been a lot of changes to the landscape, a lot of development. Um, a lot of different designation of of conservation areas and things like that, changes in Vermont state policy. Um, since that time and so, given um the nature of uh. Landscape ecology here in Vermont, the changing dynamics that are going on. Um, Bristol Conservation Commission felt it was important to kind of take a look at these, see what had changed over the past twenty or so years. Um, since these were first made. Um, and so this started a couple of years before me, actually, with other students at Middlebury College. Um, this was a poster from Lauren Gembury. Um, a a student who did work looking at what wildlife they could track um within the Bristol area based on that um wildlife corridor map. That previously showed, um, there was also. Uh, this map that uh I'm not sure the student's name, I should know this, so I'm sorry, um, but another student worked to make about road crossings. Um, and where kind of the safer versus more dangerous crossings were for wildlife. Um, and then most recently, uh, was a project by David Goldsmith who did some camera trapping in a couple of the recreational parks around Bristol to look at what wildlife was there. Um, and so all of that brought us to last spring, um, which was when I got involved with the project and I got to work with Alex and Carolyn and the rest of the commission. Um, and that was the Bristol Wildways Project, um, that was just our group name, but it was part of a. Environmental Studies class at the college, um, where we were working with our community partner, the Conservation Commission. Um, to do some work for them to kind of bring all that previous research together as well as kind of tie it all up with with more detailed information. Um, to create a real report of what was going on with Bristol's landscape connectivity with the wildlife in Bristol. Um, and so on, and so. Yeah, that took into account um a mixture of regional and state level research. Um, information from the Bristol Conservation Commission as well as that previous student research. Um, if you could just flip to the next slide. Um, and so that brought us to our work, which involved doing a mixture of fieldwork, going out and setting camera traps in Bristol. Um, doing some community outreach, engaging what um people in the town were actually feeling towards conservation and towards wildlife. Um, as well as certain aspects of development in relation to that and then also some remote um geographic information analysis. And so with that, we came up with these four products from it, which was results from a camera trap survey. Um, some more detailed maps beyond those first two that I showed um about natural resources in Bristol. Um, as well as survey results and community input and some educational outreach material. Um, tonight, I'm really just going to be going through those first two, I'm happy to talk more about the last two. Um, but I think the first two are a little more relevant for actually understanding what's happening with wildlife in Bristol. Um, and so all of this was kind of done with the overarching goal of helping to inform the Bristol Conservation Commission in. Um, their role in communicating about ongoing development and the Bristol Town Plan, um, and protecting and conserving that natural and cultural resource here in the town. And so the results we had, um firstly, were from this camera trap survey. Um, you may notice that a couple of the points were just north of Bristol, but most of the camera traps were set um at spots in Bristol. Um, and so from that, we found. Um. This for species presence, we found that raccoons were the most present, deer, squirrels, rabbits. Um, interestingly, gray foxes were also very present on the camera, which was a cool find as a conservation biologist. Um, so, you know, nothing too unexpected in terms of what the general feeling is for wildlife in Bristol. Um, but we also found uh bears during this survey over at Bristol Pond. Um, we found river otters. Uh, a bobcat or two, um, porcupines. Um, and so, yeah, there was very more species as well. Um, and so the camera trap survey kind of confirmed uh what we had already known, but also. Increased our our scope of understanding of where these species are within Bristol. Um, but really drove home that point of that there is, um, at least as far as mammals are concerned, a really. Um, high level of biodiversity in the area, a lot of different species um that are fulfilling different roles within the ecosystem. Um, somehow different uh ecological value, cultural value, economic value to the community as well. Um, and so, yeah, with that, we also wanted to tie that in with um geographic analysis. And so we made a couple of more detailed maps using information from the Vermont GeoData Portal. Uh, this here was a map of conserved and non-conserved forest land within Bristol. Um, so anything in white was not considered a forested parcel of land. Um, but we wanted to kind of have a picture of what land was already protected, how that was connected. Um, and to really visualize that for the Conservation Commission. We also just wanted to look at land cover as a whole, um, Vermont has been doing a really amazing job with. Uh, getting info from satellite imagery on this kind of thing, um, something that did not exist in two thousand and two, and so we just wanted to put this together. Um, we also looked at forest cover, tree cover. Um, and kind of where the most dense areas of trees and forests are. Um, mammal sightings according to iNaturalist within the town. Um, importantly, these are somewhat biased where people are the most common too, so that's why you kind of see a large. Splotch there in the developed area and over by the watershed center. Um, and this kind of just emphasizes the importance of that camera trap survey as well as getting into areas where these iNaturalist sightings can't be um covering. Uh, and then lastly, looking at Vermont landscape diversity. Um, this is designated by, um, I believe Vermont Fish and Wildlife for what they deemed kind of the highest priority um natural landscapes.
And do you wanna take questions as you go along or afterwards?
Um, I just have a couple more slides left, so if you want just two questions at the end.
Yeah, that's one.
Cause we have, I think, a decent sized time block for that too. Um. Yeah, and so I kind of come back to this image, uh, because what I just talked about is a lot of wildlife and heavy nature focus. Um, but that focus is really intertwined with this landscape we see of downtown Bristol of ongoing development. Um, this town is really um ingrained within nature, there's a long history of culture and tradition with that. Um, and so protecting these natural resources is, um, you know, important to the development and development is also important to this conservation. Um, and so I think, yeah, with that, um, kind of, what's next as far as the Conservation Commission is concerned? Um, they want to continue this research to to understand um the landscape here in Bristol, what's happening, what's changing. Um, what's impacting that, so increasing the kind of assessment that myself and the other students were doing last spring. Um, with that, there's potential for continued partnership with the college. Uh, which conserves a really great resource for the town, there are lots of students who are eager to take on this kind of work at little to no cost for the town, so free labor is always great. Um, and kind of with that in mind, um, working at the intersection of development and conservation, understanding how. These things are intertwined, how they're impacting each other, things like, you know, recreational activities are important within the scope of the Bristol Conservation Commission's goals as well. Um, and then. What we really want to talk about tonight and what we're hoping can be more of a discussion is how we can increase collaboration between the Conservation Commission and between you guys, the Planning Commission. Um, to be able to provide continued updates on these projects, um, to be able to discuss them more. Um, and to kind of, you know, get on the same page, um, and and foster conversation about, um. How we can work together to to benefit development and conservation within Bristol. Um, and so with that, I would love to open the floor for questions and and discussion.
Before I open the floor up for discussion, would you, would you mind going back to the map on conserve versus non-conserved?
Yeah.
Area, so. I'm, and I, I just want to point this out, I don't, I I don't know where it's embarrassed discussion or not, but. It seems to me like a lot of hogback, a lot of the mountain areas, the green, I would assume. Not entirely, but by and large is the green mountain forest. There's a lot of purple, if you will, up through the ridge on hogback, I guess you would call it. That is not considered forest, so I just. Uh, I thought that was interesting to point out, I don't know.
There's some holes in this, is that, I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, but I, looking at it with some familiarity of the property ownership map. I think that's literally publicly held land that's being shown in green, which is not the same thing as land with permanent easements on it or. Private land that will always be accessible to the public and undeveloped, like Middlebury College, for instance, owns some land right in the center of the hogbacks there. Um, like right north of the uh of that, of the the nature conservancy parcel of the um south end, but. Um, that's not going to be developed, it's conserved for all intents and purposes, not technically publicly held, but so there there you're. There are, that's not really quite an accurate picture of what is inserted in the grand scheme of like what we're really talking about.
Okay, thank you, yeah, but so. And go back to the question map, I guess, and uh. Open it up for questions, I guess.
I think one, just to to play off one, continue what we were talking about there to a degree, the. One of the things that we sort of, that this project, we we hope sort of furthers the point of is that. Injured and productive for wildlife aren't necessarily the same thing. And, you know, permanently conserve is wonderful for wildlife, but you can also, you can maintain corridors, you can maintain pathways that creators are using. Uh, routinely in developments, you can keep either, it's not incompatible with timber harvest, it's not incompatible with development. So conservation is wonderful, we love conservation, but it's not necessarily the only way to the goal that we're sort of, you know, pushing here, which is keeping in mind. Keeping intact landscapes, what what this is really all about is habitat continuity, it's about connecting parts of the land that are big blocks that are important to lots of animals, things like. The like South Mountain versus what's with this area to the Abbey Pond area, these big, big tracks that a lot of particular like. Large animals moves, for instance, like need lots of ground to. Um, to access, like those like corridors between those two things. Don't have to be conserved necessarily to be very productive for those animals, so that's the sort of example of what we're talking about here, it's not, um. The con- conservation and maintaining borders are are linked and. But they're not, they're not the same thing necessarily. So we're not, you know, you know, in this goal, we're not anti-development, we're certainly not anti-timber harvest, we're not anti any of those things. We're sort of trying to push a mindset of just trying to keep, keep those borders in mind while those practices are are being engaged in.
Anybody, um, have any questions to start off for discussion?
Bill.
Thank you. I'm in. I missed the introductions, I didn't hear who was just speaking before, a moment ago.
Oh, Alex Smith.
Alex Smith, I'm inclined to agree with. Much of what you said, if not all of it, particularly. An ongoing. Debate or deliberation. Uh, we've had since the, for at least thirty or forty years. About the definition of conservation. And so I take, um, I take conception with the one map that showed the purple lands as. Not being concerned. Uh, much of that is in use value. By the use value appraisal. And uh. Thereby is largely conserved, not entirely, uh, but then nothing is forever. We've learned and I, I take a little exception with the use of permanent. In front of the word conservation. It creates a. A false dichotomy, I believe, so. Uh, yes, I think the evidence has shown over the years that. Uh, wildlife will. Will follow. Logging roads and even. Um, and driveways and even regular wa- roads because they're quite often looking for the path of least resistance. To, so that they can conserve energy. And these are all part of the complex. Issue of what is conservation and how do we best promote it?
Thank you, so Bill, just to catch up a little bit, Carolyn Dash is on Zoom, she is the Chair of the Planning Commission. And then, I'm sorry, but I didn't, I didn't catch your name, you're.
Conservation Commission, you're the planning commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I know what I'm talking about? Conservation, and then Max is here as a uh former Middlebury College student that has worked on a lot of these projects that did the presentation. As well, so, uh. And I believe in a nutshell, what is going on is the Conservation Commission, did I get that right? I did.
Yeah, okay.
It has been, and we've had um presentations from them years or so ago. Looking at wildlife activity and corridors in the, in the um town and are basically updating us on their work.
Ideally, I have a few questions I would like to to talk to the planning commission about that we talked with the, with the Conservation Commission last week at our meeting. Uh, we have a couple of things we'd like to discuss, we'd like to know, um, how can we? Do, uh, what can we create for you, what can we research, what can we present to help improve the town plan for twenty twenty eight? Those maps that we showed at the beginning that Max showed for for you were made in two thousand and two, which will make them. Quite out of date by twenty twenty eight, so would we like to get updated maps in there? Um, we'd like to know what you would like to see, what would be helpful for your purposes, what could we use these students to create? What have we already done that you like, that's useful? What kind of deliverables can we help get students excited about that can make real change? Um, how can we best incorporate wildlife into town planning? And um, how can we collaborate on this and other conservation topics with you going forward? Just wanted to make sure we talk about all those sorts of things with you today, um, and get your opinions on those.
Yeah, I I remember when we worked on the town plan update, the last round that. That was one of the items that was vastly outdated, but the only available information on the. The corridors and the blocks, forest blocks as well.
Kind of plopped in last minute too, I think.
Yeah.
And that was something Andrew LaRoe helped with, I believe, at the Addison County Regional Planning Commission, right? Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, if there's information we could help provide or do more research on those things, you know, it's twenty twenty five right now, we have time, we could. Get that research, try to understand those pieces to get those updated, right? We just, we're trying to think about that long lens, right, we have, we've done a lot of this early work with this, with seven student projects and, um. Uh, we also had a consultant come in as well to do some of this work and now, you know, how can we pivot, what else do we need to do, right? So the forest blocks would be something we'd be interested in looking into as well, um.
Even specific areas, I mean, like within Bristol that you guys might feel were were interesting to have a, have a more detailed. Uh, map of of corridors and crossings and. Um, that can direct our focus towards, we don't need to know all this right now, this is, this is great information for us to, you know, have from.
I I think strategically. Um, what we've, we've sort of laid out and we're walking down that path is we, understanding that the town plan. Needs to be revised for twenty twenty eight. We think we've got a little bit of time to continue a housing discussion. That may or may not um gel into another zoning revision in the next, let's say. Twelve, eighteen, maybe even twenty four months, and then we need to look at. Um, going into looking at the town plan with a a certain amount of. Um, and seriousness, I guess you could say. Um, in the past, we've relied on regional planning to help us walk through that path. Um. AZ has recently come on as a full-time planner slash zoning coordinator, administrator, I guess is the right term. Um, so. Uh, we we will probably, um, we will probably, we will be exploring on how we can use her best, them best for, um. This activity as well, so it's all a new adventure as we walk towards this town plan and how we lay it out, so. Um. There's a, I guess, so as far as things, um. That come to mind, you know, we're not really terribly prepared to go in depth on this conversation, but as as far as things that come to mind for the. People on the planning commission that makes sense, doesn't make sense, like to see, don't think is necessary as we walk towards. Thinking not on what we're doing for housing right now, but our next step towards working on the town plan.
I think that it, to my mind, is the biggest thing is just updating, going through what's there, making sure it's appropriate still. Of and accurate and anything that we can get updated, especially from. Twenty-year-old data is, is a good thing. So you're referencing that original map with the.
Yeah, I think there were some other, um. If I remember correctly, and I didn't do any research for tonight, I think there were a couple of sections in there about conservation. And then that tied in with those maps as well, uh, and those forest blocks and like the next corridors, et cetera.
Yeah, that sort of thing, we're, it's very much in our, that's sort of in our sites to get a provider, good, accurate, updated.
Cause there's a, there's a big section on the environment, environmental, that's the right term, environmental aspects. If without.
Oh, I was gonna say, are there certain maps that you would like or that you know we have certain things? Well, could we add? There are cer- several different things that Max showed that we could continue working on or develop, um, in more depth, that sort of thing. Just something to think in, keep in mind, right, that we have these students, they want to do projects. We, we are really excited to keep doing this work, and so if there are things that you have on like a wish list to get updated, we're more than happy to work on those.
The hard part I see is that trying to edit and make best use of. Limited import puts across the board, because if you look at the town plan right now, it's a fairly large. Document, so I am myself a little wary of just throwing too much in because we have it. Without making sure that what gets added or edited isn't for a distinct purpose to add to.
I absolutely agree, yes, and that's why I would like to know what is the most useful thing so we can create that thing, right?
I think we're talking one sub-chapter though, yeah, was this particular thing. I think. I, I struggle and I don't want to sound sacrilegious when I say this, but I struggle with. Corridors being used to justify not developing. And we heard a little bit of that when we went through our last zoning revision with Rocky Dale. So it is the locals at two fifty becomes a big battleground for, uh, wildlife corridors versus development. So I, I, my opinion is we need to be sensitive to. Um, what we want to do or what we project for development, right now the buzz, you know. I don't know, you know, probably longer, twenty, thirty, fifty years ago, ten acre, air, ten acre lots were the thing in Vermont. Now, the thing is grow everything in village centers and there's something probably in between, you know. I don't understand the whole story, but, um, Waitsfield. And I don't know if they revised things, but at one point Waitsfield had done some very elaborate studies. Um, with, um, their, um, wild, their, their. Different forest, wow. Well, I'm trying to think of the good term here, but you know, they're forested areas, um, you know, wildlife corridors and all that kind of stuff. And then they also did an overlay, if you will, and looked at. Well, here's the areas where it's going to be conflict and all of a sudden there's, there's areas that got pulled out of. Certain zones or areas of protection, if you will, I don't know if that's the right term, but. And so they had an amalgam of. Where the areas are that were important to, um. Preserve or protect, if you will. And then there was certain areas on fridges where maybe the, that shroud of protection lapsed and went. Receded to some level, as far as I can understand, it may be interesting to look back and see. The thought process and how they came about making that happen. They also did the same thing with river corridors as well. Um, their, their solution to river corridors was not two straight lines. X number of feet from the river, but it cut and it cut and chopped and changed based on what the existing conditions were. Or what they value, what they saw as valuable development area. I think. I think it, you know, Bill had brought it up before and, and whether it's gee whiz information or not, I think it would be valuable for us to understand. What's conserved either through land use or through, um, government or public ownership, if you will, of land. I think that would help us a lot with some of that stuff and then do an education as to some of the points you brought up about why. Um, that might work and it may not.
Yeah, that sort of map we can get together, I, I, I do a lot of this similar stuff with, uh, my role in that country. And it's just a group that also does a lot of, um, public land and private land conservation work. And we can get our hands on those type of maps very easily, so that, that would be something we'll definitely.
So I, I don't know if any of that spurred more comment with any, anybody, or you're just like. Just waiting to see.
I wonder, you know, listening, listening to what you just said, I wonder if maybe our focus. Should fifty, shift in some ways towards the micro level and, and get into a little bit more of how. How you can facilitate. Traffic through developed areas more than blocking off areas to development. Um, you know, they don't have to be mutually exclusive, but you know, th- this is, it's something that always comes up when you start talking about. Wildlife protection and conservation is how does that, how does it like dovetail with our needs for increased housing, especially in Vermont? And maybe our, our focus, um, we actually, one of our camera sites was in the development off Hardscrabble Road for exactly that reason. It was to like, sort of get a sense of how animals are using really fragmented, um, heavily developed areas. And the answer is a lot of species quite active still in those places. So and thinking about how we can provide guidance and or data at least on. On how, like what, what sort of landscape decisions in developed areas can facilitate, perhaps again, not restrict. That housing that we all acknowledge that we have to promote.
And I think, and I don't know if I conveyed it very well, but I think that's a lot, was a lot of the conversation with the Waitsfield.
Yeah.
Maps that I had talked about, the other, you, you mentioned Harska, well, the other one that. I think about as far as that conflict is concerned is up around Meham Road and that road up in that north eastern part of this town.
Ireland Road. Ireland connects to Meham, which kind of stuff.
Okay, yeah, so then it goes up into Starkspur, yeah. But there has been, and I get the impression there's still some development pressure upon me. I haven't been up through there in a long time, but. Anybody else?
Kevin, that last idea. Of, uh, figuring out ways where development and wildlife. Habitat and corridors can be compatible, or at least wildlife movements. My understanding is this is a lot more complicated than. Just simply a corridor or a large block designation that can be helpful to some kinds of wildlife. The, um, the people are part of our environment too. And we're at a point in time where we're trying to find more places where people can live and. As much as some people might favor living in the village. I lived there myself for more than forty years. Uh, other people like to live in the country and as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing wrong with that.
Thank you. Uh, Slim, have you any thoughts?
Uh, the only thing I, I was thinking, I would like to know more about how. Uh, let's say recreational and, and you know, human behavior that's not, you wouldn't call development. But maybe bike trails or walking trails and this type of. Quote unquote, development affects, uh, animals, I'm, I'm guessing maybe not too much, but I don't know. I live up on Hogback and, uh, maybe it's a lot and, I mean, a, a lot of animals come right by our house, so I know they're not too shy. But, um, if there was a, let's say up in, in my backyard a ways, there was a bike trail, let's say. Or a walking, hiking trail, is that going to affect the animals, do you think, or would they easily be compatible with all that?
Yeah, we had one student, David, who did a project, oh, go on, Alex.
No, I'm sorry, that, that was my comment.
Oh, yeah, uh, one of our students, David, uh, about a year or two ago, he did a project with camera traps where he had one set in Memorial Park. So it's on the Green Mountain side and then another set at Sycamore Park. Um, to see sort of that, the valley side of town, right, or right on the edge, we have sort of two, two sides. Um, and he found a really big difference in the animals we saw, and especially with dogs. And so where people were walking dogs in Sycamore, we didn't see as many animals. So I think if we have, um, dogs going on like a bike path or something that we, that can, can change their behavior. That was what he found for his, his study, but I just love that we can use the students to do little studies like this, you know.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Alex, did you want to jump in?
Well, the, the reason I, I talked and said that's a hot topic is that there's currently a, a quite a debate. Going on at the state level about this in that there's. You know, there, there's sort of been a general perception amongst the, uh, what, what is referred to as non-consumptive outdoor user groups. Um, for a long time, that they're not impacting wildlife, that hunting, fishing and trapping is. Mountain biking is not, for instance, and as such as we sort of get research more and more every year and through. Projects like David's and, and larger and larger. And the, the short version is it's very species dependent and all of this stuff, it's important to note is very species dependent, like what. What a corridor means is species dependent, what, what habitat means and what the parameters of that need to be is species dependent. But pressure from mountain biking, snowmobiling and so on, um, affects certain animals, uh, predators more than prey. Funnily enough, um, very dramatically. That obviously though, like all of these conversations that can't, um, I, I think we run into this problem when you take that to mean. Well, we just, you know, we gotta fight against the development of bike trails, people like to mountain bike and they should have a place to do it, we're just. I think at some point this, uh, the conversation tends to get towards whether you should, well, you just shouldn't do it. Or you're, or, or you should because it doesn't do any harm and the reality is these things have some consequences and we have to figure out ways for them to cohabitate. And how you can develop trails and let people enjoy the outdoors in the way they want without. With doing the minimal amount of, you know, influence in the wildlife around, but it does certainly for a lot of species trail. Active trails and dogs walk on trails do, do make a big difference.
Thanks.
Shannon, any thoughts?
Sorry, I got the grandbaby in the background, so it might get loud. Um, yeah, I guess, um, you know, I'm, I'm always worried when I hear the word conservation that that means, um, limiting use of land. Um, so I, you know, I'd like more information, I guess, when I looked at the slides and I looked at the animals that you were talking about where they were going. Um, you know, none of those animals I saw were impacted by what's going on now, I don't see any of their numbers going down. In Vermont, I don't see that they're, that they're decreasing, I guess, so I feel like they're adapting. Um, at least from what I see, and I see, like Slim, I see a lot out where I live, so that's sort of how I feel about that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, John. Any comments? Melissa? So, um.
Yes, I want, I'm sorry, I was having trouble, trouble, uh, unmuting.
Go right ahead.
So, yeah, I agree that, uh, definitely updated, uh, map, uh, or maps in general. We really need those before we can really, I think, we do a lot of discussion before that. We kind of, you know, are discussing it blind, but I did have a question for, for Carolyn or whoever actually wants to answer it. Um. I mean, this is kind of getting detailed, I guess, but is it? It, it's possible, is it not to basically move a corridor or shift it and, and make it. So that the animals want to go a certain way? If there is like, if somebody wants to develop and there's a, there's a pretty good corridor there, is there a way to shift that? I, I thought I remembered hearing about that somewhere.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, in certain cases, so what a corridor means can be, can be very different. At times we're talking about terrain funnels, so for instance, a saddle ridge, um, there's a couple of, uh. There's a couple that we studied up on the hogbacks that are just deep saddles, so depressions in a ridgeline that. A lot of animals going from A to B on either side of that mountain are going across there, this is the path of least resistance, so that sort of thing, obviously that. That you can't shift, but also we're often talking about strips of cover. So in highly developed areas, um, I was just talking to some people in Cornwall about this, like Cornwall is very fragmented, sort of upland. Um, upland landscape and around there, a, a habitat corridor often means a hedge row. And maintaining that, so things like bobcats, for instance, just they'll, they'll run hedge rows with, you'd be shocked at how little cover there actually needs to be there. For them to feel comfortable and using those pathways, but it can connect bigger areas of their habitat. And whether that hedge row is here or a hundred yards that way, it doesn't matter so much as that it exists and it connects to important points. It's really the, it's the connection of two important points that matters more than anything. Um, so there's absolutely ways, and I think like, um, to the part of your question, you know, that's the kind of thing that, you know, if we can. Sort of identify areas that, um, you know, identify areas that are, that are important, that connect to, to. Chunks of habitat, there are absolutely ways that like in a development plan, one could manipulate the landscape to maintain connectivity. Um, that we can be very active in that sort of thing.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking, you know, if somebody has a plot of land that they want to develop and it's got some woods on it, that. You know, what do we do to get them to, I guess it depends on if it's in a conservation, what do you call a conservation area? To get them to, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna clear or gonna use nine tenths of this land. And leave a little, you know, like you said, that cover, that little bit of cover. Um, you know, so it, it seems like development and conservation. Can work really well together.
Yeah, that's, that's our, our feeling as well, and frankly from, so part of this project was putting together a little pamphlet for homeowners on how they could do that sort of thing. And I don't think it's, it, it's something that people need to be coerced into at all, they're all, you know, it's, folks are generally very interested in. In having a lot of wildlife to see out the window and just know that they're on the property and see the tracks of and so on. So giving landowners the tools to make those decisions for themselves if they see fit is a big part of our, our aim.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
Robbie, have any closing comments? No, so Carolyn, have we helped you at all?
Yeah, I think so, I've got a, a list of notes of things we can look into and think about, I just want to keep this on your radar as well, that we are. We're doing this work, we're excited to do it, we have students that want to do it as well, and as we, um, you know, start thinking about that. That town plan in three years, just to, you know, remember that we're here and we're a resource, as we know in advance, we can get the pieces together. So we can find, you know, we can do research and we can answer questions, um, that you might have, so we want to make a resource to you. Um, and I want to remember, you know, just remind you that we're around to collaborate on this and other topics as well too, as things are coming up. Um, that we do have, um, you know, know-how among our own, our own members, but also that we can, with enough heads up. Get students involved too, to do projects, to answer specific questions we might have about areas in town. So I think we just want to make sure that we're all connected, you know, we're here and we can keep those communications open between the two groups. Um, but yeah, Alex, do you feel good? Do you have any last things?
Great, no, yeah, really appreciate you guys hearing us out. Well, I think we've got the general direction from here that's useful to us, so.
I've, I've got one last.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay, um, I, the one thing that came up in my mind, um, is Bristol has so much floodplain. That has been put into the flood hazard area that makes it harder for development anyways. So I thought it might be interesting to look into the intersection between the floodplain itself and conservation. Or maybe not even conservation, but just like how, how are we handling wildlife in these floodplain areas that are already kind of harder to develop in general? And how can we better use that space in the future to avoid people being flooded out? Just something I thought about.
Yeah, that's the thing we've, we've been talking about, that within the commission too, Kristen, under one of our members is very, very, very versed in that, that particular, and like, as you say, making, making the best use of the areas we already can't develop. It was, it's gonna be a, a big deal for us.
Great. Well, thank you. And we certainly do want to keep in touch. And, and we will probably be looking forward to a lot of input as we start focusing on the town plan.
Well, thank you very much for putting us on your agenda and we'll see you again sometime.
Great. Well, thanks. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for exciting follow-up.
You guys stop by the next month.
Okay, so we flipped item five and four. So I guess we're back to, we're now on item four, which is a continuation of a discussion led by AZ on EV charging.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice.
Yeah. So I took in, took in your feedback from the, the last meeting where I first brought this proposal to you. And really thought about kind of what, what the biggest points were from that initial meeting and and this is kind of what I, I summarized as my biggest takeaways from, from our initial meeting was that allowing EVs everywhere could lead to unintentional impacts on the community. And I agree, definitely the point of this bylaw is not to just allow free rein, but to define and add some clarity to the regulations to allow for development that aligns with the town plan and with the character of Bristol itself. And this proposal is more of a more of a gap filler and a preemptive move to ensure development continues to align with the town plan. And with the character of Bristol, of the downtown, of the village areas, of the residential areas, of the outlined rural agricultural areas. And Rob pointed out vehicle service stations and if those could be applied to the EVs. And there was worries of large Tesla-like charger stations coming to Bristol if EVs were allowed as accessory uses and those coming in and just being kind of an eyesore. And then also this conversation of private versus public use of if you're just using an EV in your driveway and if it's just for you versus if a EV station is allowed for anyone who's traveling through Bristol to use kind of different, differentiating between those two. So I took that feedback and I put it back into this proposal. The one thing I kept the same was the exemptions. Level one chargers and wall-mounted level twos remaining exempt from the regulations. I did add this one stipulation that electric vehicle equipment might be subject to state or federal permits. There is a state permit for electrical work, but that would be more applying to parking lots that are looking to add EVs. So not really something that would apply to these level one or level twos, but something I, I thought to put in there just to, to catch anything that might not be at a local level. But there might be a state energy code or federal something that could apply. Not really to these, but just something that I wanted to make sure that was encapsulating everything was not just local, but state safety permits, those elements. Moving forward to the article six, conditions attachment to specific uses. I broke this out into kind of a what we're looking to do with EVs. How they would align with not only the town plan itself, but the Bristol's enhanced energy plan, which has multiple implement, implementation focused policies that look to either encourage the installation of EVs in Bristol or to to bring EVs into Bristol as well, just as an alternative transportation method. The first bullet here would be conditions that relate to all EVs. A simple one is just placing them in a way that isn't going to damage the equipment, vehicles, plows. We just had a really big snowstorm this past weekend and the snow piles are climbing high. And we wouldn't want to damage any infrastructure with improper placement of EV chargers. Another condition is that there should be at least one parking space per charger. It, not that it is exclusive to that charger, but that there is just a parking space near it, even though that seems common sense, having that written in, I felt was important. And then lastly, that they should, they shall comply with all applicable state permits and code requirements. Again, this is relating back to the state electrical permit for working in a parking lot. State energy codes, fire marshal safety code on electric work. Catching all those non-local requirements. And then I broke EV chargers into two different categories, accessory uses and conditional uses. Accessory uses are going to be the private use. This is for people who have them in their house already, but also for multifamily apartment building, an office building. An industrial plant might want to put a EV charger in their parking lot for the use of the residents or the staff. And I see this as a, an accessory use to the primary structure. It is subordinate to that use. If the office building wasn't there, there wouldn't be staffers who need to charge their car. So this would be an accessory use to that original building. This use would be more for level twos. I can further extrapolate on that. But the districts I figured this should be allowed in were village mixed, residential, office, commercial, HDR, commercial one, village residential, village business and rural agricultural one. Only because they have a lot of districts along South 116 and North 116 where traffic is high. Wanting to ensure that EV chargers weren't disallowed in a place where they might make the most sense of being along a a corridor for traffic. The second is EVs as a conditional use. This is to capture any charger stations that might come in. Even though I don't believe a Tesla supercharger station will be coming to Bristol, there's one already in, uh, Virgin's, so. That likelihood is low, but you never know. And for this, I had three conditions that I believe capture the rest of EVs. The first being facilities that are available to the public. Either for free or with a fee. This is for facilities that might be put at the Shaw's parking lot, but aren't necessarily an accessory use to that Shaw's because they're available to anyone, not just those who are shopping at Shaw's or working at Shaw's. Pardon me. So looking at getting all those charger uses. And then also including facilities at vehicle service stations. I was recently at a gas station that had an EV charger set up in their parking lot. And I think that is going to be the future of gas stations as this technology evolves. And having that be a separate use to vehicle service stations. It's not inherently tied and it's an accessory to that. It's its own use in the service station. And then any facility that has two or more charging units is just a, if you're having two or more, the impact grows. You have two units that have four ports each, that's four parking spaces that cars are using. So trying to limit the impacts and guide development and the impacts of EV chargers through through conditional uses. And these conditional uses will follow the site plan criteria and the conditions laid out in sections three fifty covering conditional uses. And the districts that conditional use EVs would be allowed in village business, ROC, village mixed, commercial one and R I one again. These are areas that I believe are traffic heavy. Where we would want to see development be fostered without impacting residential uses and keeping the character of Bristol alive. An updated use matrix reflecting where EVs are allowed. As you can see, village business is a site plan. This is because of the overlay district there. Already requires a site plan, so requiring village business to have a site plan for accessory aligns with the overlay district there. And that's, that's my updated proposal. Again, I would just like to request that any feedback you have that further aligns this, any gaps you see that I'm still missing that you would like to see filled in. Any further definitions or if you think that a district where I allowed a use to be should not be included. Any feedback, I would really appreciate. It's a much shorter proposal because you, you heard it before.
Any comments?
John? Just a couple of thoughts. One is it seems like there ought to be a definition added along with this. That's, I don't know what the wording is exactly. I don't want to write it on the fly, but essentially that states that an electrical vehicle charging facility that's available to the public for a fee or for free is a vehicle service station. And we could make that clear with that plain definition like that. That's one thought. Another thought is in your second slide where it said electric vehicle charging station, it actually says charring station. We can hope not, but just the title.
That's what could happen if the state codes aren't followed.
Right. And then in the first slide, there's an exemption for, from the regs for level one and level two chargers, I believe. Is it conceivable that somebody could have a service station, electric charging service station that is level two chargers? You know, a bunch of level twos?
I mean, yeah, but I, that's why I specified that wall-mounted level twos are exempt. Which I can further clarify to avoid that, but.
Yeah, I, I think the thing that, 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 you know, is on my mind is the, the idea of a service station. And Rob got at this at the last meeting. But basically if people are coming and going to do business, you know, and it has operating hours or maybe it's open 24 hours a day or wants to be and lighting and all the things that go with servicing the public. That to me is the important distinction. And so saying that the level two chargers are exempt kind of creates a tension in this proposed reg. What if somebody comes along and puts 10 level twos on a wall mount and starts opening for business like that? Would that be exempt?
I, I am not familiar enough with electrical vehicle charging terms and apparatus to, to know any better, but in my mind, I was thinking the same thing that using those sorts of designations like that is kind of easy because that's the current nomenclature and standards, but with anything technology related, it changes over time. And next thing you know, the standards are Delta chargers or some Swedish term or something else. And nobody knows what level one and level two is. So I think that it's kind of the use that should determine, in my mind, it's the use, level of use and availability outside of a single person or home that would define whether it would be exempt or not without knowing if a personal level, was it level three charger is even available at this point or not.
Or, I just want to agree with that quickly. It is the use that, that to me frames the approach and and brings, you know, when one considers any potential use, then you have to consider potential impact. Some uses have no impact or almost no impact. Other uses are going to have more and anything that's commercial to open to the public, business hours, et cetera, is going to have, you know, potentially the most if it's in a residential area or whatever. But, uh, so it's not the charger itself I want to regulate, it's the use.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
So anybody else?
Ian, Ian has his hand raised.
Yeah, let's have the commission talk before we end.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I kind of agree with John that the use kind of does matter. I understand that having the level one and the level two, which is what most people already own electric vehicle would have available to them. And it's one thing for their personal use or for a local business to have it one near their parking lot for their employees or themselves. It's another thing if the general public is just driving in and plugging in. I don't know if there's a way to separate out personal and private use versus public use. That's my only suggestion there. I don't know how we can do that, but I think there must be a way to say there's a difference between an actual charging station that's for, you know, for profit as opposed to one that's for your personal use, your, use of your business.
Yeah.
Any other planning commission members' comments? If I may, I, I'd like to make some comments. So I've been thinking about this. For one thing, wall mounted, I've been non-compliant because mine's on a pole in the yard.
Oh, my.
So level one and level two chargers. Level two chargers typically charge at a rate of 10 KW or less. They are in the public domain, but as far as, I think we should think of them as being obsolete. I would propose that we exempt level one and level two chargers and don't make it any more complicated. It needs to be. Level three chargers are the ones, they're commonly called fast chargers. Our car can take a charge rate up to 135 KW. So if you're sitting at a 10 KW, which is or less, which is typically a level two, you're going to wait a long time. So I think what we want to regulate and if we want to regulate the use as, as being talked about. It's, I, I, I get, I understand that, but I think we need to not get an overly complicated set of regs that regulate level ones, which is basically a plug-in 110 volt outlet or, or level two, which is a 240 volt 50 amp breaker, which feeds your electric stove in your house on a little box on a pole or on a wall. I think it just makes things overly complicated. Level three is a different story. You know, there are level three fast chargers around that were early adopters at 50 KW that are now obsolete essentially. But then unless they're there, I, I would think we would look at the concept of a service station, gas station, if you will. But I think we also need to look at the concept of them in a retail center. There are a lot of, there are more fast chargers going in retail centers than there are in gas stations. If you, if you charge around here, for instance, you can charge in the parking lot in Frog Hollow in Middlebury. You can charge in the parking lot in Frog Hollow in Middlebury. Um you can charge several different places in Burlington like Hanaford's parking lot. You can charge it to Credit Union on a fast charger over Montpelier, those types of things. Um and and actually, we're looking at putting one in. Off just off our retail downtown as well, so those types of things. Um are just as real as putting them in a gas station and should be considered. For the the reasons that we talked about. But I I think we should focus on those, that that they're they're obviously the biggest impact, because they are gonna be. The quote unquote cutting edge. And you you know, if we traveled around last year and you know, there were chargers around. Hundred and fifty, two hundred KW capability, now our car won't take it because it's. Will only take a hundred and thirty-five KW, but I mean. They're already going up in. In capacity to your point. And you know, as you look to get. A quick charge, if you will, and greater capacity of battery, those, that's gonna increase as well, so. I'm sure, I I know that probably will spur comment. So how about it?
Okay, well, I wanna say thank you, cause I really didn't understand, like I always thought level two was like something that you could set up as if to. To charge a fee, so somebody could plug in, drive in your driveway and plug in, you could charge a fee, but it sounds to me like it's fairly mundane.
Well, so level. So level twos are all over the place. There's, there's one over in the parking lot at Beam in the Town Hall in Haven, there's one in the Town Hall. And Starksborough, there's one in Heinsberg, they're all over the place and what happened? This, what has happened is people put them in, cause they were cheap to start with, so that they can say, hey, we got, uh you know, we've got charging. But given the increase in capacity and the charge rates in cars now and as it increases. Like I said before, they're effectively obsolete. But go ahead, Shannon. So I I think that that. Given that they are kind of obsolete, I think that that's why we should focus on nomenclature, what those are. And just focus on the use of it, whether it's private or for a public use, the end. Um because of that, and it's gonna keep changing, eventually the level threes are gonna be obsolete and. You know, what it what it is now, so. Anybody else have input on that, John, go ahead.
Just thinking would be a lot simpler, if you wanna talk about simple, uh you know, streamlined or whatever the phrase is, uh uh language. If we simply said something to the effect that any charger. Um or array of chargers that is, you know, available to the public for commercial use or free. I- is uh subject to conditional use, period. Just like any service station would be, period. Then don't talk about technology or anything like that, if somebody wants to use it. For their own use, okay, there it's at home. That's, that's one thing, if somebody wants to set up a commercial operation from one charger to five hundred, whatever, that's a different. Um and it's the use that matters, I don't wanna pick technology either.
So, I I the thing that struggles me a little bit with that is. Again, if you look at level two chargers, they are all over in municipal parking lots and all these different places, people put them in. A few years ago. And not that, there's a lot, probably a lot of them going in now, but there's a. I would, I I would, I would like to see. Public use per se, whether it's free or or per charge, most of these are gonna be for charge, would be. At a place such as. And I and and there's gonna be, there's gonna be higher with the loophole, as a service station or uh some sort of retail. Set up and 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 allow and not get hung up on the ones that are gonna be employers. Or municipal parking lots or public parking lots of whatever kind that there are, there are.
Writing in a blanket exemption for one technology is is kinda clunky.
Then we don't have to do the exemption, um I do hear what you're saying, that the use is the most important part. And that's kind of what I was trying to work through here with the exemption I kept because. Like the the techs- technology is going obsolete, not many people are gonna be putting in level one. Banks of chargers, it's not really feasible at all. So I'm also hearing that the use is important. Using language that doesn't kind of focus on a knowledge of EVs of like level one, level two, level three. Of trying to capture. What it's being used for and um. Seeing this as like an EV use is gonna be different depending on if it is at a service station. Versus at a retail parking lot or a municipal parking lot, that use, even though it's all an EV. The impact is different.
One other thing with your uh slot presentation there. Uh nomenclature. So, it's spelled out as. Electrical vehicle charging facility. If we could stay consistent with EVCF or something throughout. Is that and then it switches to EVs, which would.
Has anybody?
Melissa, go ahead.
Yeah, has anybody thought about, I mean, do we want to even limit? The number, so we can't, don't have someone coming in here that wants to put twenty-five charging stations, I mean. That would be outrageous, they, that would be pretty foolish, because. Sorry, I'm a mic, I don't think, you know, that. Anybody's gonna do that at this point until we all have elec- electric vehicles.
Well, that that's what recommends a simple regulation that directs. Anything that's gonna be of a commercial nature. To a conditional use process, because it's in that conditional use process, you can take the particular proposals made in a given. Uh permit application and consider them, is it? In the middle of a residential neighborhood or not, is it twenty-five or is it two and and?
Right, right, okay, yeah, that's what I was.
Particular circumstances, the 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 zoning board would then. You know, say, well, in this particular location, this looks like a good fit and you've got reasonable business hours and you're. Not gonna have gigantic overhead lights on burning all night and. Whatever, it gives the zoning board the ability to adapt to the particular proposal, which is good, that kind of flexibility is good.
Yep, that sounds like it makes the most sense.
So Ian, Ian wants wants to, has his hand up, does anybody have an objection if Ian talks? Ian, you have comments?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I think the discussion is very good, I think that. Defining it by use, I think is a good way to go ahead with that. I would caution the, what you had said Kevin about just the location. The reason I say that is because we're currently, the town of Bristol is looking at a location that's not in a uh shopping area. Or not at a gas station, it's on a piece of private property behind a shopping area. And I wouldn't want to exempt the area that we're. Trying to put in a charging station uh into, so just a word of note there. I do think the level two, while obsolete for most. Travelers, level twos will still be around because of cost and uh ease of use. Especially for businesses that maybe wanna have it for their employees. Um or, you know, other such areas where it's much simpler to put in. The uh electrical needs are much less and so it's a far simpler for uh. Install, so I do think they'll stick around for that, uh but you also need a lot of time, as Kevin mentioned earlier. It's hours and hours of charging to get thirty miles or fifty miles into your car. The reason you want fast charges is because it's, you can sit for twenty minutes and get back up to eighty percent if you're low, so it's very quick. Um but those are mostly gonna be used by uh in the tourist kind of area, people coming into Bristol. Um it's probably unlikely you would see those kind of stations and facilities used at the moment in terms of today's landscape. By people who are are sitting at a job and having their car out in a parking lot, it just. I think financially wouldn't make sense and also the use of fast chargers for your battery vehicle. Isn't recommended uh for long-term use because of the amount of power that's being put into your battery. So, just a couple comments, and I I will say. You know, this discussion. It has been um motivated because Bristol received two grants, one was for a level two charging. And we looked at areas where that might uh be able to be put in. And then we had the opportunity to go for level three charging, the fast chargers, and we did, we received both those grants and. The level two, we put on pause because we received the fast charging, knowing that more than likely, as Kevin mentioned, they they just wouldn't be used by the public. They would just sit there and be unused, um and so the fast charging is the way to go. But then obviously, the need for this bylaw to be able to actually have them put in now, now that we actually have the project and we receive the funding. That's why we're talking uh this evening about this.
Any, any other comments, Slim? You have any things? Wanna share?
Well, I've pretty much answered my questions and the last one was about being careful of location near retail. Outlets for for any kind of a bank that may take up parking spaces for a long period of time on a, now I can see if this is. If it was a level two, they'd be there all day, uh I guess level three, it doesn't make that much difference, they'd be in and out in a reasonable time, so that was what I was thinking about.
Thanks. Any other comments?
Um, I got.
Do you have more questions or answers?
No, I think this is. Good um for me to at least work into another. Kind of iteration of this, like I said before in my first presentation. I'm not trying to steamroll the planning commission and just force something through that isn't. Been thought through and I very much appreciate all the feedback. And I'm gonna take this into consideration, rewrite it again. And bring it to y'all after my vacation.
So your latest PowerPoint was, was that, I I missed that as far as the check the uh. Prep documents?
Yeah, they got put in very late.
So is it in there now?
Yes, it is now in the, it is now in the shared drive. I, it did take me a minute to get it up.
Nice, that's fine, I, so when you start talking about districts, all that's just a blur to me.
Yeah, no, the presentation is on the shared folder, you can all view it um and look back on it and it's there.
Okay, great, thanks. Cool, so I think that. Well, we will go now to administrative matters and the. First item is to approve minutes from January twenty-first and thirtieth. So I think it has, he has them up for a quick look see.
Let me know if I'm scrolling too fast, I don't wanna try to get as much in there.
The rules are the third. That's January thirtieth?
I would move that we adopt these minutes.
Anybody second? Rob seconds, all in favor? Say aye, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions, okay, so they they pass. And then the January twenty-first. Did we do?
Yeah, I think that was the first one was up and then that, that was the one, and then AZ switched to the third.
Okay, so.
And John made a motion to approve both. John made an emo- a motion to approve both.
Oh, John did?
John, you made a motion for both?
Okay, that takes care of that. So the next item is uh AZ's February zoning report.
I'll I'll share the zoning report with y'all. Very exciting stuff happening right now, really actually not that much. Most of, most of this has been um accessory buildings, there has been um. A couple change, uh. Two changes of uses. One is for a bed and breakfast in the HDR. Uh district that is going to be a single family dwelling. Quite a. A change that actually puts it further into compliance with the zoning regulations. And then the other change of use was for an accessory. Uh structure, part of that becoming a ADU. And then, oh, there is a single family dwelling as well. But it's been very slow in the zoning department, not much has been going on. Couple DRB subdivision applications um on the docket. Uh a subdivision was recently approved, a two lot subdivision and a six unit planning and development. Was approved as well recently. So, things are happening, even in the dead of winter, um but for the most part, it's been pretty quiet. Not many people putting in applications for things, but I have a feeling that will change. As the snow thaws and the spring. Springtime cheer comes. But for now, it's been pretty quiet.
Any questions for AZ, John?
Yeah, AZ, what is the status of the Masterson appeal?
It's still working, John.
Just wondering, uh is it, it's in environmental court, I'm just trying to get a sense of where it's at.
It's not in a ma- environmental court.
Okay, I'm not asking something good questions, I'm asking a process question, sort of, what stage is it at?
Currently, an appeal has been set for June as a date. But I'm working with the landowner to reach compliance before an appeal is necessary. So that compliance is, the goal is compliance, um and that's what I'm working on with the landowner. Currently, working on getting conditions from the original conditional use. Into compliance and then working on. Um getting the rest of the land into compliance.
And what is the June date?
The twenty-fifth.
No, but for, uh I wasn't clear what that was for.
For the appeal, the, the landowner appealed. My notice of violation within the timeframe. And that appeal date was set. For June twenty-fifth.
So, I I mean, is that a hearing or something on the twenty-fifth, I'm not understanding.
Yes, it's a, it's a hearing for the appeal of my notice of violation.
And that's convened by whom?
The Development Review Board.
Gotcha, alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Oh. Ian said. Um, PC member terms that are up this year, if we have time.
Ooh, I'm not prepared for that, do you know what they are?
Not off the top of my head, um, we might table that till the next meeting. Even though the next meeting is when terms expire.
I'll take an action to review that.
I can, if you want, it's, I can tell you right now, it was just on my mind because I'd just done the town report. Um, it's John, Melissa and Rob. They're up this year, and so I'll probably be contacting you three. Uh, and if you have desires to continue to serve on the board.
Please, it's good time. All three, pretty pleased.
Okay, that's great, that's what I like to hear, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'll start bringing cookies.
You have a recipe for Zoom cookies?
Uh, I was gonna get the ones at shots. But I can all make my own if you'll stay.
Um, discussion, next item is item C. New Haven and Moncton Town Plans, there's been some adjacent town plan activity.
Yeah, um, I took a little look into those town plans, um, they're pretty large. Uh, they're long documents, so if you have some time, I do recommend reading them, but. Also understand if no one else is passionate about town plans as I am. Um, some highlights from both New Haven and Moncton. They are also focusing on senior housing as a um, large topic. Um, as they're seeing declines in their population as well, um, so they've. Made changes to their town plans to reflect a growing need for senior housing, um, elderly care. Uh, Moncton is focusing on both elderly care and care for its youth, um, really trying to. Encourage a diverse population, um. And just something I took away from the town plans, is something to think on for our town plan, is the inclusion of pictures. Really enhances the overall, um. Readabild- readability and comprehension of the town plan, um, espec- especially with. Uh, kind of the mun- municipal buildings of like, this is what the town hall looks like, even though. If you live in Bristol, it's kind of straightforward, but it's just a nice element that I find, um. Fun and innovative and inspiring. Um, but the main thing that I wanted to bring up from these two town plans was the focus on senior housing. Um, that has been identified in our neighboring towns and how, um. We can bring that into not only our conversation on housing, but um, looking long term on. Planning for the health of our community and um, caring for our neighbors. Even though I don't live here, but. Neighbor from, neighbor from afar.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, move on to Miss Lane's correspondence against me.
Um. That, I don't know if any, everyone has gotten a chance to read that memo, um, but. This came from a uh, a conversation I had with Kevin Brown, um, related to. Um, DRB decisions and I just had a question on the wording that was in our regulations, um. And ensuring that everything was done properly within the timelines, um. And this centers around the phrase deemed approval, um, which is in the. DRB Development Review Board Decision Clause, which is section three forty subsection three. Um. And that sparked a conversation with Kevin Brown on the deemed approval clause. Um, and in that he wrote, um, he gave some recommendations to the planning commission. Um, I included that in his correspondence, it's not something that needs to happen, it is just a recommendation. Um. Of something that could be updated in the future, um, iterations of the regulations. Um, also does not have to be, it was just correspondence between Kevin Brown and I on. The regulations and wording, um, wanted it, wanted to bring it to the planning commission attention. Um, if you have any questions about it at a different time, feel free, if you have questions about it now, happy to answer those.
The, the one thing, just a quick read through of the final. Uh, suggestion at the, the last mention of any sort of committee, which it's DRB the whole way through. As uh, planning commissioner all of a sudden, so.
Yeah, I think that, I think that might have.
Carryover from previous wording.
Yeah, I I noticed that typo as well, um, but those are the words from Kevin's original email, kept them in there. Um, that planning commission should be Development Review Board, um, you guys aren't taking on zoning regulations again.
Well, there was a period of time that.
That's where I think it took care of.
A lot of site plan review, had planning commissioner or something.
Yeah, it was all the, so everything that wasn't. Uh, waiver or anything out for this board of adjustment to do.
But yeah, that correspondence, um, I recommend reading over it, looking into it, um. Kevin and I had a conversation about it in our monthly meeting, um. These are recommendations from Kevin Brown, who not only is the chair of the Development Review Board, but also a lawyer who. Knows more of the in-depth legalese of zoning regulations, um, and. Something to just keep in your mind in the considerations, again, not an urgent change. Um, not a change that is happening, but just something to think on.
So has anybody had a chance to look at it and any comment?
I have not had success getting the materials for tonight's meeting, so I have not had a look at it, um. I would like to.
Um, John, is that, could you not get the link to work?
Correct.
Okay, um, did anyone else have issues with the Dominion Cloud share link?
I went to it and it gave me a, something that forwarded me to the folder that I. Eventually got into, but it didn't go directly to the folder.
Okay. Um, would anyone be opposed to me trying a, like the Microsoft SharePoint? Share instead of Dominion Cloud, would anyone be opposed to that?
So the thing I did, not that you have to do it, do it, but I. Attached all the docs in the email, notice email.
Yep.
And also put them up on the menu.
I can do that as well.
That, so everybody has it directly right in the meetings.
Yeah, I can do that as well, there's some documents that are so large that. Um, Outlook won't let me do, but I can do it for like minutes and all that things.
So my, I I guess I have a unfair advantage in, but my, my concern. What I understand the letter to say, um, would extend the process of. A written, um, finding, if you will, which I don't think. The landowners should have to, um, live with that extending. Extending that process beyond the commonly stated forty five days or whatever it is. Um, but anyway, so like AZ said, take a look at it and. We'll take a, make a determination if we want to put in the parking lot for our next revisions.
I will also, um, I'll send out all the materials that were in the folder in an email after this meeting. So that you don't have to worry about figuring out the, the link. Um, and they'll just be there, and then moving forward, everything will be attached.
So that gets us through administrative matters, I guess the next thing is. Public comment, do we have any public comment? Do we have any public? Hearing none, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Most sure.
Rob makes a motion, John seconds, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, anybody abstaining, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Goodnight.